Greg Kai.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I rise tonight as a private citizen to air my deep concerns over the timeline of Article 7 on the special town meeting warrant, the Martinson roof project. On Wednesday night, October 10th, this committee voted three to nothing in favor of the Martinson roof project. At that time, the chairman said that if he voted for this, he might catch holy hell. My question to you is, did you catch holy hell? Another question, you, Mr. Chairman, also apologized for making this vote. And my question is, who did you apologize for? It was a thought-out vote. And then on Thursday, 10/16, the Capitol Budget Committee had their meeting. And then on Thursday, that same Thursday, the agenda for the pre-meeting for special town meeting was posted at 15:34. But then, for some reason, on Saturday, October 18th, at 9:39, there was an amendment offered at that time. No notice was given to the school, as far as I'm concerned. So one of my deep concerns is, was the board coerced to change their vote? I'm deeply concerned if that is the case. I mean, here you are, you voted three oh in favor of that project, and then changed your vote, but the amended version, when was that posted? I don't know, because it certainly wouldn't have been posted on a Saturday. So one of the other things is that, who did you talk to after that meeting where you voted three to nothing? I think you owe it to the town to fully discuss why you changed your vote. I also have concerns that the Capitol Budget Committee voted four to one to recommend, but what was the recommendation? Where were the figures? Was it a cheaper roof price? Where's the research on that? I know, in dealing with the Mass School Building Authority, that they ask for oodles and oodles and oodles of information. So at the very least, I hope that the Capitol Budget Committee shares their cost analysis and their sources with the school. And I really want to hear, other than the override, which really isn't the committee's purview, I want to hear why we aren't taking the state up on a match program for the accelerated roof program. Since I was on the Capitol Budget Committee, the Martinson roof project, I believe, has been on. So please enlighten us, and I hope we get to know how your votes were changed one night to changed on the eve of town meeting, and we didn't find out about it until after all the discussion on that first night of town meeting. Thank you for giving me this time.
So I'm waiting for, I think, a couple of the people from the school committee to show up, and then we'll have the discussion on the school roof. I'd like to move into, well, actually, I want to introduce the new interim town administrator, Charles Sumner. Charles, do you have any words you'd like to say?
I'd just like to thank the select board for having the confidence to vote to appoint me as the interim. I look forward to working with the town and dealing with a number of issues. I think, just for rough conversation, the financial forecast and the budgetary process is key in my mind, and I've already met with your town accountant, Meg, talking about a timeline and a game plan, but we have a lot to do in a very short period of time. But otherwise, I look forward to, you know, I know that the way that my contract's currently written, it'll be three days here and one remote, but I'll be here all four days for a while, is I really want to meet as many people as possible, department heads, employees, understand some of the issues. And as I had mentioned before, if there are any questions, I don't care what day it is, any issues that I can address, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. But I look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. All right, so I think we'll just take up for the first discussion, at least the vote on Mr. Sumner's contract. Bob put together a proposal, and then I asked to just make some changes, so I don't know if either one of you had any comments or questions on it. Steve, did you have any comments or questions on the proposed changes?
I've seen the most up-to-date copy, and my understanding is that Mr. Sumner is fine with those changes, so I don't have any questions or comments.
Okay. Trish?
Same.
All right. So I will motion to the select board accept or approve the updated interim town administrator's contract for Mr. Sumner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Number two was I had concerns in regards to how our last special time meeting went, and how there was no, I guess, meeting amongst us three in regards to what should go on the town, the special time meeting warrant. And I think a lot of stuff, especially a lot of budgetary items, that we've gotten feedback from shouldn't have been on there. And I think we need to, even though I believe the charter says it in there, I think we need to tighten up and think of a way how we can do this process in a better way where we don't have that issue again. I don't know if you guys have any thoughts on how that town meeting went, and especially where we didn't get a chance to review the articles, to approve them and not to go forward, because I think a lot of the articles on there probably should have waited until the annual town meeting. Do you have any thoughts on it, Steve?
Yeah, I'm fine with any effort to improve communication and review, like, while in advance of town meeting. You know, we do get a draft of the town meeting warrant articles before the warrant is published, but I'm certainly in favor of more review and back-and-forth communication before we print it and in the lead-up to town meeting. You know, our town charter by design is very decentralized with checks and balances, so we do have an independently elected planning board and board of assessors and school committee, board of health and things of that nature. So, you know, I do think that, you know, they're within their rights because they feel like they have a mandate from the voters to put articles on the town meeting warrant, but I'm all in favor of review and communication beforehand and making sure that if something is on the special town meeting warrant, it's because it is time-sensitive, order burdens due, or something of that nature. And, you know, I would definitely want to see some language officially drafted to review before taking a vote, but, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
I too, I felt it was a little disjointed, and I can't help but think it's because of where we're at with, you know, Peter couldn't give us the hours because of his situation with retirement, and then with part-time office help. I just felt like it was very disjointed, and I agree. I think, I know, talking to the Capitol Budget and then getting new information from the advisory board the night of the meeting, it just, it seems a little late at that point, you know? And going back to the question that we were just asked, it's like we're getting this information, more information, kind of last minute, and then causing us to just rethink things. So I'm all for it, too.
Yeah, it's, I think there's a lot of things that shouldn't have been on the town meeting warrant, should have waited until next year for the annual. And I think that's one thing that we need to really cue on going forward, or any other future select board, is that we really need to take it up and see what's really important to, what actually needs to be on, because I don't think, I think if we were able to review the warrant articles, I think that meeting should have been half a night, in my opinion. It shouldn't have been nowhere near two nights' worth of discussion on it. So I'm looking at the, how should I, so it's a going forward, you know, someone has the, I see a sheet right there.
This one?
Yeah.
Sure.
I think.
Sorry.
It's all right. I'll put the second sheet.
That is the second.
No, no, I left my paperwork, the motions, in the book. I think I left them in the office. I move that the board vote to adopt a policy at the select board meeting that follows the close of the ATM and STM warrants. The board will formally review all articles in anticipation of the preparation of town meeting warrant. Can I get a second on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would just suggest that we tweak the motion to perhaps instruct town council to draft a policy, because technically, there's not a policy that we're voting on tonight, because no language has been drafted or presented.
Hmm.
So it's something that, it could be drafted, and we just...
Exactly. Well, it'll all get emailed to us in between now and the next meeting, submit comments and feedbacks and suggested changes, and then we can vote in at the next meeting.
Yeah, I could see that with the way this motion's written, to vote, because it sounds like we're adopting a policy right now. I could see that. So I move the select board to have town council adopt a policy, that the select board can vote at a future meeting, that follows the close of annual town meeting and special time meeting warrants. And the board will review all articles in anticipation or presentation of town meeting warrant. Does that sound right?
I think you just want to mention, you want me to draft it, not adopt it, so.
All right.
But I'd be happy to draft it. It'll look very similar to what you see in here. It'll be one or two sentences, that's it.
Okay. So do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could just make one comment.
Absolutely.
It's my understanding that the online Zoom feed is working, but just for MCM, apparently the television feed, there's some sort of issue that folks are experiencing.
All right, there's nothing we can do about it, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's not for us, yeah.
Beyond our capabilities on that one. All right, so I got the cars, thanks, Trish.
You're welcome.
Cars and copters. I had a, if you haven't seen, the Bob Lanin reached out in regards to concerns with this, and I don't know if you guys reviewed the permitting for this. I guess it was, I guess, to what Bob Lanin says and Chief Tavares, when I talked to him about a week or so after receiving this, that they were having a helicopter ride to take off from the fairgrounds. And Bob Lanin reached out to us in regards to concerns with this, and so I went and looked at the permitting for this that came before us, and there was nothing that came in in regards to allowing this. And I have, and then she sent out a thing, I guess, a week before, that I think the same company, there was a helicopter crash in California. And I have concerns in regards to how this went above, because, jeez, God forbid if anything like that happened here, where we didn't even approve it, I don't know what, where we'd be at as a town in regards to litigation and all that and everything. And I know I spoke, when I spoke to Chief Tavares, the, about it, the police department did a after-assessment report, which I was very grateful for, I believe this was from Mike DeMayo, and he left notes, so I just want to read it into the record in regards to what Mike DeMayo noticed and his suggestions. Number one, we had cars coming and going all day, better inside, traffic delineation of pedestrian cars is needed, coupled with more signage, no vehicles initiated using hazelates while driving around the fairgrounds. Then again, you could hear the cars coming quite loudly. The police department had several noise complaints about the helicopters. Sergeant Gonzalez advised me, and I relayed to Colby, to change the flight pattern. This was done, and the complaints lessened. The heliport was pretty busy. The 10-minute flight was more like 3 minutes 20 seconds. The lines did not end until 4:27 PM. Quite loud all day with the helicopter noise on site. Maybe next year, we shift the tour helicopters down back north of the solar field. Less houses in the direction, a lot more woods to muffle the noise. One issue of the very low-flying drone from the Epoxy Max owner. I did speak with him, and he secured the drone. The yellow helicopter at one point was flying over the crowd. Add speed bumps or speed tables to slow the cars down on site. The use of orange flags was good. To move the cars into the venue, to move the cars into the venue, I imagine, they're not number 10. Zero bags were checked, no screeners at Gate E1 entrance. There were many CC staff members present. They did a good job checking patrons in with ticketing. Use of volunteer vests, those staff vest shirts would make it easier to locate staff. Gate E was backed up for a bit around 10:45. We did manage to get two lanes entering Gate E, however, cars were already leaving Gate E. We did send a few cars out Gate S until traffic subsided. At Gate E, it was a small rush of cars and quickly dissipated, event the backup of South River Street. We also observed patrons walking up and down the roadway of Gate E because the pedestrian path was blocked by a wooden fence. Colby quickly had this removed. We would have caught this on the walk-through. Staff at Gate A was very good. There were many late cars entering Gate A. Gate A should be locked at a specific time, and all VIP latecomers should be forced to enter Gate S. This will limit the excessive, excess driving of cars near patrons from Gate A. The Aggie Hall area, this was a VIP exit area as well. It turned into a car enthusiast video photo area while the premier cars were exiting. It was actually great video photo area while the premier cars are exiting, excuse me. It was a great experience for many patrons to view. Some pedestrian separation would be good in this area, i.e. bike rack. We had a cruise with blue lights near Gate A to avoid any high-speed departures. We did have a few car shows, a few show cars entering Gate E, so some confusion there, pot out to enter. More food vendors for next year. The event was highly attended. Need to shorten the show times. Many folks will leave within two hours of the show start. Marshal Fire Department did a great job, pre-staging medical equipment on the fairgrounds. Nearly impossible to walk and carry that much equipment all day. One medical call was requested in the VIP lounge. No lost children, no reported on-site injuries. Venue layout was good. Need to limit, reduce show cars randomly driving during exit and entering. Need to have clearer traffic lanes via bike rack, cones, walk-in escorts to move patrons out of the way. The event was very well-attended. I'm certain next year will be bigger. I feel next year, we will split the venue up into same or similar zones at the Levitate Fair. We need to use the solar field area more for show cars and shift some parking to the outside perimeter lots and resident parking on their lines. It may lessen the complaints if neighbors are making some money. We did follow Levitate Pocket Plan by having all vehicles leaving Gate A and S travel north 3A. This alleviates backups in South River and Main Street. Outside of this, for the inaugural event, we do not know what to expect, and we planned the best we could. Feedback, please, from Mike. So it was a first event, and I think Mike did, in my opinion, a very good job in regards to his report and being observant of what was going on and taking some feedback from people. And I credit Mike DeMayo and the Marshal Police Department on doing that. My concerns are in regards to a first event, and nobody not really know what to expect. I think they did a good job overall, but the given rides of the helicopter was a major concern for me in light of any possible issue, especially wasn't approved. Bob, I mean, is there a way we should address this with the event person in regards to the helicopter rides are not being approved for? I mean, do you have any suggestions going forward, what we should do?
Well, I think you can notify the fair, because this was held on private property, that, you know, that type of an event might not be fully permissible, but maybe let the helicopters land and people can tour them, but, you know, if the events, if the helicopter rides were, you know, really causing a nuisance to people, you know, you could kind of give them an indication now that they, that might not be an approved aspect of their show or whatever they were doing. I didn't go to the event, so I don't really know what was happening, but I think that's what you would do, let the fairgrounds know that if they're planning for next year, are they going to do a similar event, that it may not be possible to include those helicopter rides if they're really a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
In your view. We do have an airport in town, and, you know, but, you know, is that shifting the issue to somewhere else? I don't know, but at least that's set up for that type of a event, or, you know, could be set up for that type of an event. Plymouth has an airshow every once in a while. They don't do it all the time, but, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to see, I don't want us to drive out an event that's a possible revenue producer for the town and the businesses in there and all that, but the only thing is, my concern was wrapping around this whole helicopter rides, that nobody was anywhere aware of and not being...
Well, I think that they...
Out of the permitting process, what they put down, they did, they completely left that out, from the looks of me, and I don't know if that was intentional or not.
I don't know whether they described it or not. I don't remember seeing it in the application either, but I do think if you tell the fairgrounds, they can address it and tell them that, you know, maybe that's an aspect of what they want to do there that they can't do.
You going to call it, Steve?
Yes, to quickly summarize this, it's my understanding that nobody ranging from the fairgrounds to town government approved of or expected there to be any helicopter rides at this event, and I don't think anyone's happy about it. So I can't speak to what other people are going to do, but I think it's safe to say that this type of event is not going to be approved, and if they were to ever even apply to the town again, that people would be extra scrupulous, but no one from the fairgrounds to town government expected this or is happy about it.
Just to clarify, are you saying in regards to the event itself, or just the portion of whether given rides in the helicopter?
The rides.
Okay. Yeah, because there's one thing I did ask Bob Lanin, I was like, are you okay with the helicopter landing there? She was fine with that. It was the rides that was driving everybody nuts, I think, in regards to it, and I will highly agree with that. Do you have any comments on it, Trish?
I'm an Air Force brat, so I don't mind helicopter rides. I think what Mike said, putting it over a different section, would be one thing, but I do think it should be part of the permitting aspect. I don't know whether it falls on the town, where it is private property, but it should have been discussed somewhere. But again, I think, you know, making it difficult for businesses to come to this town isn't going to benefit anyone.
One thing I had a discussion with the chief, and Bob, let me know if this, if I could put in the motion, or if we have to have another discussion on it, but is that when we do the permitting for events or even virtual licenses and all that, that I think the police department should have, I think we should be forward on information so the police department has that on hand.
I think a lot of times, you do get a recommendation from police and fire before you approve them.
Yes.
I just don't think that either anybody paid attention or knew that this aspect was going to go on, so.
No, no, I get that. The only thing is, my look at it is, I think the police department should be getting the, what's on the permit, so that way, if they're at the event, or there's somebody with, let's say, a virtual license they need to check on in regards to, they got approval from the town, they have a record of it in the system. That way, you can just look it up if anybody's inquiring. So is that something that we should probably put off all the time outside of this?
No, I just think you take it on a case-by-case basis. If you have an event that might have an impact on our budding properties, you make sure that if you're going to approve it, whoever is in charge of any safety or security is aware of any conditions and limitations.
All right.
Eric, I also think, to be able to do the rave and say that helicopter, these are helicopter rides, part of something, I think a lot of what bothers people is not knowing.
Yeah.
Like, is this an emergency? Then people start freaking out, so. But they, I mean, there's bogs over there and everything that they could be doing the rides over that wouldn't impact, God forbid if there was a crash, but...
I mean, my look at it is that if they wanted to do rides, I think they, I mean, I guess it would have to come down to a further review of the select board in regards to it, but it probably should be done at the airport. And I don't know if this event, I don't think this type of event would be, the airport would be accommodating to it, where it's an active airport.
Mr. Chairman, too, you know, one of the offsets for the fairgrounds being able to do what they do is that, you know, the people around them are allowed to charge for parking, and that actually helps those people, you know, accept some of the impacts. So not only does it impact the vendors and the people that come to the town, but it does impact those neighbors sometimes financially, because they charge, you know...
Well, if I remember correctly, reading Officer, uh, Master DeMayo's report, I think that was a thing that he highlighted, is that there was no park, the neighbors of the fairgrounds didn't have the opportunity to allow people to park in lines and make money. So I think that was another aspect of the issues that were going on, whereas, I mean, I don't think anybody, talking to Chief Tavares, nobody, it was the first time this event, they didn't know how big it was going to be. It sounded like it was pretty big on the overall. And so the grateful thing is that Officer DeMayo was observing in regards to what took place, what should be recommended going forward next year, and the police department seems to already have an idea if they do come back. The main concern, I guess, is, right now, with Bob Lanin, like, I didn't know what was going on until Bob Lanin got a complaint, was that they were giving rides to people, and they weren't authorized to do that. And I just feel like that, my opinion, that them leaving that out of their paperwork was, you know, went us wondering if that was intentional or not, you know, especially where they've done it at other venues, you know? So is there any, Bob, is there any suggestion that we should put down as a motion for this, or should we just...
I think you've had your discussion. I don't think you need to take any formal...
That's what I was thinking. So we just, next time this comes about, we have to the select board at the time to take this matter up and put it forward.
Definitely.
Okay. Is everybody here from the school committees, Superintendent Solomon?
I know that Vice Chair, Greg was on the way.
I'm here.
Yes?
Everybody's here.
All right, let's move into the roof discussion, then, since everybody's here. Let's see, Ed, I guess, if you want to come up, and Fred, I think, you want to come up too as well?
We can, he can do that.
All right, so I think I can, I'm going to speak for myself, and then everybody else can fill in. So the change in vote for the select board meeting was because of the whole roofing material and all that from the select board, and we didn't, and I changed because the only thing is, I wanted a further review before we went any further with this. And where we got off to a late start in regards to putting the boards together and all that, it really impacted the overview of everything. And new information came, and so I wanted to get that vetted out first, before we moved forward and everything like that. So I know, so there's been emails going back and forth for all week in regards to people's thoughts, comments, and suggestions in regards to EPDM roofing. And TPO, I sat down and talked with Fred earlier, he gave me his thoughts, and talked in the email, and talking to you, Ed, and everything, and I also wanted to hear from Jack Griffin in regards to it. So we're here to have this open conversation, and then hopefully, after this, we'll just move on and see where we go from there. So do you have anything to say, Superintendent Solomon?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Kelly. I just want to reiterate from the school's point of view that we're very happy that the town is bringing up matters that could make this a better process for us. But there's a couple of facts that remain, and that we have a failing roof that needs to be replaced. We feel, as a school department, that we've worked to hit all the timelines that were put in front of us by the town in terms of talking with capital, giving the information to advisory up to the select board, where issues could have been brought out and talked about. We also are in the accelerated repair program, the MSBA, which is offering a 49.3% refund for us for being in the program, and it's important that, to know that we've met all those timelines as well, including a timeline that's coming up on Wednesday. as well, including a timeline that's coming up on Wednesday, where they're voting to recommend for authorization the execution of a project funding agreement in the accelerated repair, repair program for the Martinson roof. So I, I just want to make it clear that we, as a citizen and as the superintendent, I, I think we need to make sure we don't lose this opportunity for funding through the MSBA, because I think it would be fiscally irresponsible if, if we did so.
No, Superintendent, I appreciate that. I don't think anybody here is looking to sidetrack that goal. I think the whole thing is that, and that's one of the reasons why we rushed to have this meeting, is I believe you guys have a school committee meeting tomorrow that you're meeting with.
Not a school committee, they have the, sorry, Chairman, we have the MSBA, the board of directors meeting that happens on Wednesday.
Okay.
Right.
So, all right, so we, you need to speed this up, and if there's anything outstanding, I guess, if you're having a board director's, if there's anything that was going on, I guess this would be the time you had to bring it forward to them, right?
Well, I'm afraid that it would, it's a little past that time.
Okay.
It would be difficult for them to consider keeping us in the program if we're going to make a radical change. I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I don't have a crystal ball.
Oh, that's all right. More, more information we have on this, the better.
Exactly.
The only is that there were people that had concerns in regards to the roofing material and all that, so I was like, you know, something, let's.
No, it's, it's good to get it. I, I'm just imploring that the, you know, the, the town voted to approve the funding of it, and now we're looking for the select board to simply put it on the ballot as the next step, so it can move forward. I just wanted to state that as sort of a framework. We do have, I believe, our architect on the project, Matt Kozelowski, and our owner, project manager, Deborah, I'm going to say it wrong, Deborah, but Maria, in consult here if we need them on, on Zoom.
On the, on the forty-nine point one percent reimbursement.
I think it's forty-nine point three, but.
Three?
I don't know. Yes.
We're in, well, we're in the ballpark.
Forty-nine point three one.
Okay. So I, I had a discussion with Fred earlier in regards to some of the reimbursement points that we can get.
Yes.
Fred says he's going to look into it further for me, so I'm just hoping that when Fred does, he sits down with you and he's going to enlighten me, but I think there's a way, looking at it, I brought this up before, I think there's a way we can potentially add more. It was, I'm kind of puzzled in regards to if those other points were achievable, why we didn't go after them. So we'd like to have a review on those, potentially, whatever we have to do in regards to certain categories of.
Yes.
Attain those points, that, because at the end of the day, if we can get fifty-five, fifty-six percent reimbursement, that'll go a long ways if, if that's possible.
Yeah, well, I, I'll let Assistant Superintendent Miller and our Director of Facilities, Facilities Manager.
I know, I asked him.
They, they can talk elusively about that.
Miller about it, and he never responded back to me, so.
Well, he's here and we.
I know he is, so.
So, no, but that's fair, and yeah, no.
Let you know, and I let Fred know, so I would like to see a little more in depth and reach, and if those goals of what the MSBA put forward in regards to adding more points on, that we can get more reimbursement if possible, some of those goals that, that we'd be able to do would be done.
Well, we're certainly aligned in trying to get as much reimbursement as we can, so that, that's fair. Well, we, we can talk about that, if you like, as we move forward. I just wanted to say that.
No, no, I appreciate, I just wanted to let you know that part as well from me.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, Superintendent. Jack, did you want to get up and make your piece right now?
Sure. Excuse me. A couple of things in regards to timing, which was brought up a little while ago. What happened this year was we had a town interim administrator who did not ever give the capital budget, their capital budget projects. So I waited and waited and waited, and we finally, I said, you know what, I've got the warrant, let me dig it out. So I dug it out, and we had our first meeting. Unfortunately, it was after your vote, and it was after Advisory Board. And then everybody noticed the EPDM. The Advisory Board called me Monday morning, town meeting, said, gee, Jack, we need to talk. And they were heavily leaning towards the EPDM. That's what caused everything to happen. It was the mistiming, it never happened before, but because of where we are in that situation. So other than that, the big change, the EPDM, I found a forty-year warranty. It's a ninety mil, it's forty years, it's going to cost you thirty-eight to fifty thousand dollars more, and that should be it. You're saving seven to sixteen million dollars if you cover inflation in there. The name of the company is Very Sign, and they're out of PA, they're a huge commercial company. And I also know that the Mass School Building Authority has made changes midway for other schools, as I checked it online. So I don't think we're in a position that will lose anything, but we have to approach it with delicacy. And we have to get to the MSBA rep and tell them, explain exactly what we're doing. All we're doing is switching the material. Now, when you switch the material, I'm sure there's going to be some construction reconfiguration. I'm not an expert, but I can tell you that's where I stand. And the committee stood on that before they knew about the ninety millimeter, so that's where I am. That's it.
Appreciate that, Jack. All right, I spoke to both of you, and so I don't know if you guys are in agreement for the most part or not, but if you guys, Ed, if you want to start off and, and give your background and, and then your, your thoughts in regards between the EPDM, the TPO, and, and I'd be gratefully appreciative.
Sure. Just in general, my, my background is I've been working in commercial construction for over thirty-two, thirty-three years, and have built multiple, you know, dozens of school projects. My company is probably the largest construction manager that does schools in, in Massachusetts. And we have folks internally that have done, you know, all our schoolwork, for instance, and an architect on board who has done a lot of, his specialty is roofing and exterior wall, and has worked with the architect quite a bit in the past as well. So we, we, you know, myself and my company have quite a bit of experience, so I wanted to take a look at the drawings. Unfortunately, due to the timing of the whole situation, you know, the board selections and then the, the town meeting kind of crunched. We didn't really get a good look at it or even get a chance to discuss it at all with the, the school committee ahead of time to ask all these questions beforehand. So unfortunately, you know, we had to ask them a couple of questions at the, at the town meeting, which I didn't really want to, but, you know, just trying to get some, some answers. I had an estimate done internally of the, you know, of the project based on the drawings, and we do this all the time. We, we compared our estimate to the, the architect's estimator, estimating company, and we did a comparison, like a reconciliation. And we do this all the time with the same, same firm on, on multiple projects. And we're always typically a little bit higher, and they always sort of tend to say, okay, yep, you're right, let's go to your number. Our numbers were six point three million, and their, their number was six point three million, ours was six point eight million. You know, even if it falls kind of in the middle, if we, if we take the two estimates, average them, you're around six point five million. My biggest concern right now is that it's borderline of triggering the MAAB board. If, if we go over six point five million dollars on the cost of the roof itself, that triggers us to have to do a lot of other things within the building and outside the building. We might have to regrade some of the, the sidewalks, which means maybe even some of the parking lots, all new striping, all new handicap access. It's, it's two to three million dollars worth of work if we go over a six point five million dollar budget. That's a big factor. So I wanted to look closely at the budget and just really make sure that we could keep it under that six point five. Our estimate right now is six point eight. The, I think PMNC was at six point three. We, I was looking at, okay, can we, can we look at a, a different type of roof material that would get us below? So I looked at EPDM, which is existing on the building right now, has been used for, you know, sixty, you know, multiple, you know, long, long time. I had our people look at, look at the types of material, whether it's TPO or EPDM. And with the newer materials nowadays, they're all like sixty mil, they're equivalent, essentially equivalent products, whether it's white or black. The white is more reflective for the sun and is better for basically, you know, preventing overheating in the summer. It's better in a southern climate where you're cooling more often. A black roof is typically better because it absorbs the sun in the winter. You have less heating costs, so it's more efficient in the winter. It's a little bit of a balancing act, but I, I, you know, cost wise, the roofs are basically equivalent roofs. With going to a thicker insulation, the, the reflectivity, the black or white doesn't matter as much because you're adding more insulation, so the insulation is kind of protecting it against that as much of a factor, so I'm not as worried about that. I think the biggest thing is reliability and durability. We want it to last forever and not have to build another roof in twenty-five years and have to spend another seven, eight million dollars twenty-five years from now. So longevity wise, you know, everybody that I've asked, including experts, including roofers, they say that they're both essentially the equivalent roof, where you got to keep people off them. There's, there's other ways that you can reinforce the roof, use a reinforced EPDM, you can use walkway pads, which they do have. I think just the maintenance part needs to be really maintained and like not have people walk all over the roof. That's, every roofer is going to tell you it got damaged by people being on the roof. A lot of times the, over twenty-five, thirty years, the joints can open up a little bit. The older roof membranes, which are forty-five mil thinner and have a, an older glue that has worn out over the years, but it has happened with the old TPO and the EPDM is equally. They're, the old EP, the old TPO, the roofs were brittle and cracked. The new, new products that they have now, they've fixed that. They've added more plasticizer, and it made the roofs better. They've improved both. They're, right now, they're basically both equal. So, you know, right now, a TPO is shown. I think most roofers can do both, but if we could put it in as an alternate to just one line and on one page say alternate as EPDM, it's going to, it's going to tell us which is, which is, which is the least expensive. A TPO might be five hundred grand more because you have, or five hundred grand less. It depends on the competition. We have this sixty-nine other roofs in Massachusetts going on for schools that there's only a handful, you know, just say if there's a dozen roofers going after those projects, they're going to pick and choose, and the prices are going to be higher. So with more competition, more people bidding on this roof, opening it up to two different options, some, some roofers just do TPO, some roofers just do EPDM, most do both. But if we can open that up and keep the competition for more roofers available to it, that's going to drive the cost down. So keeping that option open is, was, you know, my, my idea of just, you know, trying to get down to the lowest possible cost for the roof to get under that six point five million. TPO is a great roof, it'll work, not going to say anything about it. It sounds like it's, at this point, it might be too late to switch. If, if they're going to, you know, approve it on Wednesday, it may be too late. But if there's an option and they can put it in as a, you know, one line item, just saying as an add alternate or deduct alternate, let, let the subs decide on what that price is going to be. I, I don't think there's much of a difference. I know, I, you know, I know Fred has a preference of TPO, and if that's the case, I, I think that makes sense. It's a good product. I, we may differ a little bit on the, you know, the durability of it. I think they're both as equally durable. But, you know, they're both going to be equal products. Let me just try to go through my notes. I think I got through most of the stuff. Sorry, I'm talking a lot, but there's a lot of information that, there was some other details that, you know, it's a, it's a schematic level design. It's a, it's an early stage of design, so I thought we still have some time to make some little, these are small changes, one line item on the drawings. It's not like redoing the drawings. There are some details that will change a little bit, but, you know, the architect had mentioned metal flashings around all the masonry. I think that's a, a great way to go. It was an add alternate, got squashed because of cost, which makes sense, but you still have to back that with like a plywood to go up anyway. So whether you use TPO or, or EPDM, you still have to have that as a, some type of backer. We, we would typically have plywood, plywood versus the, the metal isn't that much different price. So I think, I, you know, there was a, an email back from the architect that I just wanted to respond to on that, and I'm sure he can speak to that later. The, there's some soffit details that are not shown right now because it's early stage of drawings, they'll be developed in the future, but I've got concerns over cost creep. At this stage, we've got a five hundred thousand dollar contingency built into the six point eight million that we estimated, and that typically will include a lot of those design contingencies. So as the drawings develop and increase cost, that contingency number goes down, so it typically would absorb any of those design changes. So I think we're covered on that, but I, we just have to be very careful on the design and making sure it doesn't, doesn't go, you know, go crazy. One of the other big concerns I had was any, any hazardous materials under the roof, a nineteen sixty-three roof. The material that they used for adhesives back then was had, had ACM materials underneath. It's trapped, it's buried in multiple layers, it's not hazardous right now to anybody, but once we rip it up, the people that are working on that roof will have to have asbestos operators license, basically be able to be work, work on that roof with, with potential asbestos, if there is any. There was some testing done, and there was some found in some areas, some found in, some weren't found in other areas. I'm concerned if we do end up hitting that, that, that contingency of the five hundred, that, that, that is what we have to cover that. If we start adding anything else for the design, that eats that up, we won't, we will likely go over budget, and then that will trigger the MAAB, which means that now we're going to have a, you know, one, you know, one to three million dollar, you know, change next year if we go over that budget because we have to do all the, you know, the accessibility MAAB requirements. If, we, we have to stay under that six point five million dollar number. There's also, in addition to that, some soft costs, which are architects' cost, OPM cost, all the stuff that is not the contractor, but it's design fees and all that stuff that is separate. That, that all adds up to the seven point four million dollars. The, the number that I had was, was up higher than that, so I'm, I'm concerned that that number that we voted on is too little by, you know, e- even, you know, seven hundred thousand dollars or so. And I didn't know what contingency we had above and beyond that. I don't know that there are any. All the alternates got wiped out, all the options, I think, got wiped out. So I think they've minimized it already, but we just have to be real careful about it. You know, TPO roof's going to work. If we're stuck, not stuck with that, it's a great option, but we just got to make sure that we can trim the costs a little bit more. And with, with the architect's help, they're, they're an excellent architect, and the OPM, they'll, we just need to work together to get, to, to get that budget down below that six point five on the construction cost. That's all I had, I think, yeah. Plenty.
Do you have anything to add, Fred?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Just very quickly, what I learned tonight, I do myself to Ed, you can tell people when you meet someone after a couple of minutes of talking to them, you can tell you're well intentioned.
Yeah, I'm not, not trying to stop anything. We need to, we need to do this job.
Absolutely. We all want the same thing. You take a step back, we all want the best roof.
Yeah.
The most sustainable roof at the best price. So that's basically it. We're, we're in the ninth inning of this, this game. We, if we throw any, anything on the tracks, I'm afraid I could derail it. We don't want to do that. I think what I've been pushing for from the very beginning is to get, I wanted to go to the previous MSBA meeting to get approval, but the design, you know, the systematic design couldn't catch up to that, because there's sixty-nine projects out there, they're going to be bid, and they're going to go in the street, and the contractor availability is going to change. The people are going to, the contractor is going to start picking jobs that they want. So all of a sudden, when we get out there, if we delay, we delay getting out in the street, we're going to be stuck. We're going to be stuck with higher prices with maybe contractors that aren't very good. So. So, so I, so I encourage the board to, to get the ballot moving and let's get, let's get this thing approved by MSBA and out in the street.
If we, if we delay this a year, if we, if we stop this, change it, change anything that delays it, next year, they, they call it escalation. Next year, it'll be three percent more than what it is right now. Three percent kicks us over to the six point five million dollar cost, which means next year, we're spending three to four million dollars more.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's looking to delay this. The whole thing is that new information came up. There's concerns, there's, there was questions regards to the roof material we're using. So the whole thing is that we're just looking at that, alright. Should we look at something else? Do we have time to look into it? Is there times of, you know, if you wanted to change material, can we do it, all that and everything? Like I said, the, the, no one's to blame here regards to any committees or anything like that. It's just, we got off too late, stopped putting the boards together and that really threw a wrench into things, you know? Uh, it's unfortunate, uh, because we should have had this conversation a while back. But I'd rather have the conversation now about it than have it afterwards and then find out, oh, we could have done something differently. You know, so it's, uh, I appreciate all the hard work and effort that everybody's put into this. And, but I feel that if there's questions that are, uh, been risen, then you should, you know, we should, uh, inquire about it and, and hopefully inform the public that, look, we're doing our best to make sure we're going with the best material, uh, keeping the costs under control. But the other thing is, I'm sure is informing to everybody is that you're saying, look, if we go over a certain threshold in a number, it's gonna trigger a whole bunch of other things that is gonna drive this number up even larger, you know? So, uh, Jack, did you have something to add or say?
Yeah, um, we issued a bond for one million fifty. And out of that bond, we used, uh, right now, sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. And then we're gonna have a bill for a hundred thirteen, seven fifty and six twenty-four for a total of seventy-three, seven hundred. So we're gonna be left with three hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and eight dollars that can go towards not hitting that number. That you, see, I just wanted to bring that up.
The, um, that number.
Oh, hold on, uh, oh, actually, yeah, you answer and then I'll get you after Rich.
Yeah.
Would you wanna say it?
Just that number is, is a fixed number over three years. If we spend that money over three years, it's, that triggers it. So we have to still, you know, we can't, we can't delay any part of that even a year. It's, it's a three-year limitation for the MAAB.
Alright. So you know, Rich?
Going well, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Name and address, please.
Say again?
One day I forgot, name and address, we forget that with the.
Yeah, Rich Green School Committee, two forty-four Winslow Street. Yeah, I just wanna say, I, I heard what Ed had said and, and Fred. EPDM can be problematic, right? It, I mean, if you're looking at warranties, you're, you could maintain it fifty years. Some of the downsides, um, is, is the attachment mechanism, right? You know, there's a number of ways of doing it. It can be problematic because EPDM does shrink. You're looking at glued, um, or ballasted or, or, you know, a couple of different ways of doing it. That's neither here nor there, but we're, we're looking at, if we don't get approved for funding, we're gonna end up, great, we saved on materials, but the project's capital expense was twice as much, right? We're not gonna get reimbursed. I would say push it across the finish line, get the MSBA approval. We can value engineer it at a later date. You know, is what it is. If I had a choice from scratch, I, I may pick a different roof. But we, we need to stick with what we have now in order to be, um, succeed in this project.
No, I don't disagree with you, Rich. I don't think anybody here disagrees. Nobody's trying to hold this up. The whole thing is that some things come up.
Well, there was no accusation there. I'm just.
Wanted to have a conversation on it and then, and inform the public what's going on and, and that's it. So, I mean, it's, uh, just to let everybody know that between those we have on our boards and committees, the staff and everything, that everybody's trying to do their part regards to making sure that, uh, this is done right. I guess you'd say for the first part of it, but also that we're using quality material that one, uh, cost effectiveness. But the whole thing is that, uh, long-term lifespan out of it and everything. So the whole thing is that we don't revisit this any, anytime sooner than we have to.
No, agreed. I mean, we're looking for best value. I, I'd never go with best price. Best value is where it's at. Um, and I do hire his company from time to time, the various companies you've worked for over the.
Yes.
I don't know who you.
I'm on the client side. I'm either sponsor and our OPM, so, yeah. So, uh, yeah, what he said is accurate, but it's good, but we need to move this forward.
Nobody's, nobody's holding up, just having a discussion on it, Rich.
Yep.
I feel there's no, no, nothing, no harm in having a discussion and, and, uh, and, and informing the public what's going on and especially where things that come up that, uh, if, if not everybody on the select board, but some of us had concerns that we wanted to get more information before we move forward as well. Because I think that would be part of our responsibility and our due diligence in regards to this whole process, in my opinion. So I just wanna go through, like, so the lifespan of the TPO in the EPDM, there's really no difference, you're saying?
Correct.
In regards to the TPO, uh, I think I was talking with Fred earlier, you're saying it's been out for like twenty years?
A little bit longer, yeah, a little bit longer. The warranty is twenty years.
Warranty is twenty years, so have we looked, have, have, have we looked at?
Same as EPDM.
Have we looked at any schools, uh, that have put it on since, or any buildings since then and see how it's faring out in regards to twenty years ago roughly, if it's still around?
Thousands of roofs that with TPO and it's lasted, it's, it's just as durable as the EPDM. And, and, you know, it's, it's all about, uh, not damaging it, not getting people up there damaging it. You have to treat it the correct way. That's the biggest thing, no shovels.
Okay, so that's the, that's the big one that was brought up at, I think, last annual town meeting. And we have a discussion on it now again, but not damaging it, not walking areas you're not supposed to. Um, so what is our plan, like, not knowing the layout of the mounting school roof, I imagine all the equipment that's up there is staying in the same spot, right?
Right.
And so is there a lot of area to cover in regards to getting to all that equipment? Is it, it's not centralized, I imagine, right?
It is, is, um, exhaust fans all over, there's forty-five exhaust fans up there. So they're, each classroom may basically has their own exhaust fan, so they're, they're scattered throughout. But, you know, we have annual refreshing training with our contractors and custodians to talk about, you know, snow removal process, number one, and access for mechanics to get to, to work, to use the walkways that are provided, make sure they clean up after themselves. That is the number one thing is it punctures, is someone steps on a screw that fell on the ground, it punctures, punctures the, uh, the membrane. Starts, starts a problem, you know?
Um, so do we have, I think you highlighted some of them. So are you saying you have protocols in place right now in regards to when people have to go up on the roof?
We do. That custodian has to be notified, has to provide them access to it. They inspect the area after the, after the mechanic leaves.
Okay, and, um, in regards to the walking area or mat or something like that, are we, are we putting down, is there gonna be a specific walking areas where the contractors up there are, are gonna be walking on a specific material and have to stay within that material?
If you can. I mean, it's, sometimes you have to go, you can't get to every, area roof drains might need to be cleaned. So they'll have to walk off the path, you know, so, um, but for the most part, they should be staying on the path.
So are we gonna have, is it gonna be permanent paths that are established up there? So if they have to walk off, off path, I guess.
Right.
Is there something temporary we could put down, they can mark down? Is it worth it? I mean, what, what are we looking at here?
You just have to be careful in those areas. I mean, you can't, you can't put.
Check the bottom of your head?
Walkway mats, they're like three by three pads that are thicker. They glue down over the roof that you walk on those pads to the mechanical areas. But, uh, unless you do the whole roof, which doesn't make sense, you know, it just becomes cost prohibitive. So you just have to be careful, you know? You have to be careful in certain areas. There's, there's other options, but they're more expensive and we can't afford it right now.
So in regards to, I heard snow removal and I don't think that's one thing that nobody wants to hear. So what would be the reasons that you, what would be the reason you have to go up there and do snow removal?
If, if, if you had.
Cause what would be the, I mean, I, I imagine the roof should be able to hold a snow, a snow load, right? So there's.
The structural engineer looked at the snow load and they, they meet the snow load capacity.
Alright, so is there any reason why you need to go up there and remove snow?
Only in extreme conditions would that have to be the case.
So when you say extreme, highlight it, extreme.
Like a three-foot snowdrift up there or eighteen inches of snow on the, on the roof would, would cause us to react to that.
And what, do we have a procedure down for snow removal?
We do. The, you'll call roofing contractor, they, they will provide qualified roofing, uh, shoveling crews. That's part of their contract, it's in their base contract. They're fully insured.
And, um, what, what kind of, you know, what, do they use it for, uh, snow removal equipment up there?
Plastic shovels, plastic, you know, they're not gonna bring it down a grade. They're not gonna bring, they're gonna take it down to six inches and get the, get the heavy stuff off.
Okay, um, one thing I've been hearing about in regards to the TPO and the EPDM is the environmental, um, impact, I guess. What, what is, what is the, what, can you explain to me what the, the environmental issue is in regards to?
I think it, it, it's PFAS.
It seems like, it seems like it's a, it's a big thing in regards to the choice between the two is the environmental impact on it.
It's, it's, the, the TPO is, is a white roof. It's reflect, more reflective. With the new green building USGBC lead program, it's maintain, mandates certain lead requirements for each new building construction or renovation. And there's a certain type of glues with low VOCs. The, the newer glues are lower VOCs and they're not as great, to be honest with you. The older glues are, you know, smellier, the VOCs.
Right.
And they work better. They don't use them as much anymore because of the green building program. You, you, we can use it on this project if we needed to, uh, because we're not, we're not going for lead, you know, lead criteria or anything like that. So we can use a, a better glue. But with, with the, the whole green building movement, um, a, a lot of the contractors are doing the white roofs because it's mandated on, on all government buildings type of thing. It's, it's more common nowadays to use the white roof, the TPO roof. So it's more common, more contractors doing it, as bulk prices may be better because you're doing a ton more of those white roofs, so your prices can go down. So it might, might actually be better, uh, less expensive. So that's, you know, it's, it creates a heat island effect if you have a black roof, a white roof doesn't. Those are the only things that I'm really aware of on the, you know, it's more efficient on some buildings, some buildings it's not.
Yeah, I mean, uh, that's, it's something that got my attention reading the paperwork that I've been fed over the last few days. In regards to it, there's one thing that was glaring is the environmental impact of, between either one and, um, that might concern because, like I said, it's like, certain people are pushing towards more greener, uh, things. But the whole thing is that, um, it may be cheaper, uh, right now, like you said, because they may be buying in bulk. But at the end of the day, um, we're discussing the long-term durability of the products, is what I'm looking at, you know, and so.
In my mind, they're equal at this point.
Right. It's, um, let me see here. The, oh, you touched on the metal flashing versus plywood and you said it was pretty much the same. Can you, can I be explained more or?
I didn't really do a takeoff of the pricing and, and do the math on that. But normally when you have a, like a chimney, like a mason chimney, you need to run the rubber up about a foot, terminate it into the brick. So you cut a, a strip and you, like a termination bar into that brick or a regular, they call it. It has to have a substrate to attach to, a flat. You can't, you can't really attach it to the masonry. So you put like either plywood or you put metal up there to go up on a smooth surface to then go into that hole and that terminates the roof. So whether we use metal or plywood, they'll both work as equally. With the metal, uh, apparently they, you know, they, they did an estimate and it, it was an add alternate to add it and it came up to three hundred seven thousand dollars, I forget the dollar amount, but it was an add, some three fourteen, well, I forget the number, but.
Three forty-six.
Yeah, so it was a, it was an add for the metal. I don't know if I totally agree with it, but it's a better application, but plywood does work. It's what's been used forever.
Mr. Chairman, Matt, the architect is on Zoom if you wanna ask his opinion.
Yeah, if he's, if he's there.
Matt, are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're fine.
Thank you, Matt.
Uh, yeah.
Can you, can you give your, Matt, can you give your, uh, your name and address if possible?
Sure, Matt Zikowski, uh, I'm from, uh, Plymouth, Connecticut.
Thank you.
Um, so we did an alternate for a metal panel system. So one of the, the big issues that we found in the, in our existing condition study was that the, the brick which had through wall flashing, um, lots of the weak, which is how the water gets out from behind the brick, there's some metal flashes that are down low. Uh, the weeps had then, uh, covered in either by being remortared over, uh, with some repainting work that was done or they were infilled with some like silicone sealants and things. One of the issues is, is that we are bringing this roof up to code compliance for insulation thickness, which is much more than it currently has. And so we're raising our flashing heights and in many cases, we'd be burying that existing through wall flashing, uh, which is not, you know, it's not good practice, but it's also not allowed under the warranties. We need to make sure that if we have through wall flashings, uh, that they're extended above the roof line. And the only real way to do that is to remove leg-in-leg the brick and install new through, metal through wall flashings and then put the brick back, which is a very expensive and very time, uh, sensitive and tedious process. So we looked at, uh, two alternate methods of doing this, which would be, one, to cover those vertical faces with the actual membrane themselves. So we got some applicability in the, in the, the capability of the system to do that. Um, and, uh, as, as the gentleman was speaking, he's correct. We, we have to provide a substrate board that goes on top of the brick and then apply the membrane to that. And then basically our roofing membrane will roll over the edge of the roof. We'll apply our edge system, which includes a metal edge and, and either shop fabricated, uh, metal or we, we had an alternate as well for metal panel there to basically mimic what is currently there with the wood and lead coated copper system. Um, and then that would roll down and go right into the next roof. So we effectively take the through wall flashing out of the equation. The other option, which I think he's speaking to, the three hundred fifty thousand dollars, was in lieu of doing that membrane down the wall with the substrate board, we would actually do a, a metal panel, uh, system. So we create basically a rain screen in front of that wall to keep the water off of the brick and getting into the system. I think it's aesthetically much more appeasing. Um, it works very great. Uh, the question was, could the project afford it? And I think has been mentioned before, um, that MAAB threshold was a very important thing for us to be cognizant of, which is one of the reasons why this was chosen as a potential, uh, add alternate. So if we did see bid savings, we might be able to go after it. But it wouldn't necessarily put this project immediately in danger of overrunning that threshold.
You guys good? Um, Matt, uh, in regards to the contingency concerns that were brought up in regards to, uh, asbestos glue and all that, and then, uh, and then possibly there's concerns that there might be a possible shortfall on it. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so, um, one of the good things was is that there, and it may have come up before, but there is no nineteen sixty-ish roof on there. So in nineteen ninety-eight, when the ad reno was done, where they added the, the wing and they also renovated, uh, most of the building, they did abate the building. When we did the test cuts, um, that we test cut every area of the roof that we could just to at least get an, uh, an idea. And what we found is, is that it was basically removed completely down to deck so that they could install a very thin, it was maybe only like four mil thick. But, uh, they basically put down a polyethylene sheet as a, a vapor retarder on the wood deck. And the wood decks in the areas that we cut were actually very clean. So our UEC, who was our environmentalist, um, they took samples of all of the decks, the assembly pieces, the flashings that we could get. Um, and they all came back, um, with good results. The only thing that we found that we had an issue were, were the gutters that were on the cafeteria. Uh, we asked for an estimate, for a number to abate those and we carried that number in our estimate. So there is, there, uh, there's a little bit of a sum in there to deal with the, uh, the gutters. Now, that isn't to say that something else that we didn't test, you know, couldn't be found. But based on the, you know, the conditions we saw from the nineteen ninety-eight renovation, it seemed like they did a pretty thorough job of abating the building. So while I wouldn't say the chance is zero, it seems like it'd at least be pretty low.
In regards to monies that we have of a contingency, is. In regards to monies that we have in the contingency, you were satisfied, is, based on the work that was done in the past in the school?
Correct, yeah, what we could see in the existing drawings and what we found out there during the test cuts seemed to, to comply with each other.
Steve, do you have any questions?
I do, yes. You know, for folks who are trying to follow along, out of all the school roofs, the Martinson roof is in the worst condition. Um, it's leaking and it's beyond the point of repair or refurbishment, it needs a full roof replacement. And, you know, this has been through multiple checkpoints along the way at town meeting, town meeting voters approved an initial step of funding the specs and engineering design for the roof to take to the MSBA, turn those into bid-ready construction documents, and then most recently at town meeting, town meeting approved moving forward with financing this project. And so the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the accelerated roof repair program is the program that we're going through to finance this project, did a forty-nine percent reimbursement at at least three million dollars. And we also went through the MSBA for the new high school and we actually got that in just before the reimbursement percentage was lowered. Uh, so the timing was good on that front, so we're familiar with the MSBA, um, and what they do. And so I would just add that town meeting voted to move forward, they approved the financing of this project and now it falls on the select board to pick, uh, a date on the ballot for town, uh, for the residents in Marshfield to vote how they wanna finance this full roof replacement project. So I was just gonna go around and ask questions from some folks and parties who have been involved throughout this process, so, Jack, it's okay with you, I wanted to start and ask you a few questions if that's all right, if you wouldn't mind getting up to the lectern. So we have a lot of fresh faces and new faces, both working in town government and getting involved, so just as a reminder, Jack is the chair of the capital budget committee. And for folks who haven't had the opportunity to get to know you, would you just mind kind of familiarizing folks with your professional background and experience?
I have quite a background. I was the, uh, I was in charge of all the pharmacies of Stop and Shop from twenty-one to thirty-one. I founded two multimillion dollar companies. I, uh, been involved with everything in town, I mean, from vice president of the Chamber of Commerce, president of Kiwanis, president of Winslow House, I can go on and on. So I've been through everything you could possibly think of in the budgets and everything else.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Jack. Um, and, you know, I appreciate that before capital budget had its meeting, that you shared with the select board kinda some research that you had done and some numbers that you had arrived at for the potential construction costs and savings for EPDM versus TPO as the roofing material. Um, for folks who are trying to follow along, could you just walk us through the methodology that you used in your research to arrive at those numbers?
It's pretty simple, you have a four-year warranty on a product that costs fifty thousand dollars more than the one we have right now. And that, that product's gonna last forty years, full warranty, and it's gonna save you seventy, sixteen million dollars because you're not gonna replace the roof in twenty years. So that's basically where it comes down to, it's just a material change. It's got nothing to do with all the flashing and everything else, I'm not a, I'm not that type of guy. I was looking at the material and I can't believe that we didn't find it ahead of time, that we have a forty-year EDPM product that is fully guaranteed, which is only gonna cost thirty-eight to fifty thousand dollars. And I would like to say that on some of the things that I read that was up there, it did say we could go with a thicker cushion or whatever the word was. And, uh, I think that's what they meant, that's made me look, I'm going like, okay, there's gotta be something better. And that's simply it, it's, it's pretty simple. It's unfortunate that we're in a situation, which I think may get addressed next week on a bylaw that I wanna pass. But we come down to a situation where we don't have the time. We're, we're, we're at a point where we may lose the money. But yet, we're gonna make a bad decision. And I know that I can't make that decision. I can't recommend saying that it's gonna cost us twice the amount of money and when we got a guaranteed forty years. And that's basically why, where I am, and that's what the committee feels too. So that's it.
Sure, no, thank you, Jack, and, you know, are those numbers coming from comparing recent bids in other communities for the same?
I know what you're trying to do, stop, you're trying to discredit.
I can, I can go in deeper and deeper into this.
Sure, yeah.
I, I will tell you that, and it, without the forty-year guarantee, Brown University, uh, every college uses, all the churches use EDPM or EPDM. And they last because they take care of them, I got a, I got a piece of paper that I could show you of all. It wasn't just pulling out numbers, I wanted to see what was around us.
Right.
So that's basically it. I mean, that's what I did, I mean, that's what we did.
Right, I, I think it's important to see, you know, if, if you're saying that we're gonna save potentially a million dollars with one material versus another, I think it's helpful, it's a helpful roadmap for folks to compare the two different methodologies that were used, so I was just wondering.
I, I, I got the information from the manufacturer. They sell by the roll, you look at the roll and it, this is this cost and you get the price for hours. And it came down between thirty-eight and fifty thousand difference because it depends on the size of the roof. The bigger the roof, the less you're gonna pay per square foot. So that's where that came from, it's, it's very simple, it's like going out buying a car. You know, you go out there, you look at it and the car says, oh, I got a warranty for a hundred thousand. And then you go out and you find another car that's got a warranty for three hundred thousand. If it's basically the same car, what are you gonna do, you go out with a three hundred thousand warranty. You know, basically that's what it is, I mean, it, it's common sense.
Yeah.
It's very much common sense.
Yeah, thank you, Jack, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, I do have some questions for Matt, uh, from the architectural firm, if he's still on the Zoom line.
I am here.
All right, great. Uh, Matt, could you walk us through what the vetting process is to become an approved entity with the Massachusetts School Building Authority?
Um, that's actually probably a better question for the OPM on this one.
And, you know, when you're in the very beginning stages of this process, right, would it be fair to say that you start with an initial list of roofing material possibilities and then as you work through the specs that you narrow down the list of materials to what you think is the best fit for the particular building you're working on?
Correct, yeah, the, one of the most, I mean, the most important key feature on selecting, um, a particular system is what is the environment that we're trying to work in, what are the existing conditions? And then what is, you know, the, uh, quality of life improvements that we can provide with the different systems? So, uh, when we initially started this project, actually, believe it or not, we were pursuing built-up as the, uh, kinda the preferred methodology. But as we were going through, uh, manufacturers and trying to find out how they get, uh, photovoltaic, uh, acceptability, cause that is, that is a requirement that we must provide as part of MSBA, they basically suggested to add PVC to their roof type. So once we learned that that was their, you know, approved methodology for doing that, um, we started looking at different options. And we, we narrowed it down between, uh, basically the PVC and a TPO. We've had, uh, projects where we typically bid them against each other, uh, with, with TPO usually coming in, um, uh, more cost, uh, you know, cost-conscious. And in the more recent time, we've seen them start to narrow the gap a little bit more and they're, they're a little bit more competitive together, but, uh, you know, all the conversations we had about environmental impacts and things like that, um, it was decided that it was just better for us to move forward and drop the PVC uh, in favor of the TPO and being that they, we're gonna get similar warranties, similar service life, perhaps better, uh, environmental impacts of the, the TPO and it was gonna meet some of the challenges of the existing conditions, like I was mentioning, the vertical, uh, brick walls that we're trying to, to deal with, to maybe reduce costs elsewhere, uh, on the project.
And we know how TPO and EPDM compare head-to-head in the vacuum, but could you walk us through why you're recommending TPO in particular for the Martinson School?
So the main reasons why we like, uh, the TPO for this project are the hot air welded seams. So, um, you know, one of the things we might have to do for, uh, with EPDM to get our PV approval is to enhance the thickness. So they may require us to jump from a sixty mil to a higher mil thickness. They also might require us to double lap seam the joints over the locations, which would add cost to the project. Um, the other reason is in the vertical applications, although EPDM can be installed vertically on a wall, um, we have no choice but black, essentially, whereas the TPO, um, has a few color options that we could pursue for the aesthetic reasons of that building, plus there, there are a little bit of concerns about adding a black product to the vertical face of the brick membrane and, and increasing the thermal, uh, you know, exposure of those walls. So the, you know, the largest thing is, and I know this has been mentioned, uh, maintenance really is the biggest key factor in any roof. Um, maintaining a roof is important, but, you know, in the, in the event that there may be some lapses in, in maintenance, what are some of the things we might look for? And one of the things that we found in our practice and, uh, just, you know, general experience is those hot air welded seams, um, do hold up better when there is ponding water, so if there's a season where you get a lot of leaf built up or, um, you know, maintenance misses their mark and there is some ponding water that occurs, the good thing about the TPO is that for the short term, the, uh, the seams will hold up even buried underwater, some, even some manufacturers, uh, considering some ponding within their warranty requirements. Uh, the EPDM, uh, you know, there, the water, while it may hold up, it does accelerate the, the deterioration, but if that glue seam has given way, then that's a perfect entry point for water. So, you know, those are, those are, you know, some of the reasons, but I think the, the reason why TPO has become the preferred choice for Martinson from the design perspective.
Thank you, and, you know, would it be fair to say that your firm has been available and accessible for any questions folks might have throughout this entire process?
Yeah, yeah, we've tried to make ourselves available for these meetings, um, you know, meetings with the owner. Uh, again, uh, and I, I, I hope this comes across, by no means are we trying to push, uh, a specific product. Where we try to work with owners, especially if they are comfortable with a certain system that they've maintained before. And, you know, we look at it and we see that the conditions are applicable to it. Um, you know, we, we hold no, you know, judgment against that.
Thank you. You know, the initial attempt to schedule this meeting was October thirtieth, which was too late because the MSBA is meeting on October twenty-ninth and there's a concern that if we don't move ahead to schedule the date at the ballot, that the MSBA might not approve this project and move forward and we might lose that forty-nine percent reimbursement, so, you know, I understand why some residents might be concerned when the majority of the select board votes against favorably recommending the article to finance and fund this project at town meeting and there was even a resident at town meeting who pointed out that we have the power to implicitly kill the financing of this project because we select the election date and if we don't do that, then this doesn't happen and doesn't move forward, so I do think that this gives the impression to residents who are concerned that this whole project is at risk and we're at risk of losing reimbursement from the state and that, you know, our current timeline and trajectory is to get this done in the summer of twenty twenty-six and that, you know, this is potentially at risk, so, you know, there's been a lot of talk about communication and I would just say that I think we could have avoided this last-minute fire drill if we had just picked up the phone and reached out at any point during this process. We have more access than anyone to our town employees and all we had to do was pick up the phone and reach out. We can do our research and our legwork in between our meetings and bring things forward, but I think what we've done, not intentionally, but created kind of a last-minute scramble and I think all we had to do was just pick up the phone and communicate and reach out at any point during this process and, you know, I think we've seen that there was a very well-thought-out process to recommend this particular material to replace the Martinson School roof. Yes.
All right, um, Steve, I, I just, hold on a second, Trish, uh, the only thing I, I wanted to say that is that, uh, nobody was looking to gas this project, uh, in any way, just over this issue, the whole thing is that, uh, at the late stage of this, no fault due to anybody because of the way that we were able to put the boys and committees together, um, that, the questions raised at town meeting and as we know, were raised before that, but we just didn't have time to get together and discuss it. And the whole thing is that, I, I looked at it that, what better way to inform the public of our concerns in regards to why we voted the way, at least I voted the way I did, uh, on a second vote, that was mentioned at town meeting. It's cause I wanted to have this process talked about, inform the public. Um, the whole thing is that, not knowing at that moment, until just a couple of days ago, I was informed that we really can't change anything now because we're already in the process and there's supposed to be a discussion coming forward this Wednesday, so upon that, all right, and then a few people reached out to me and said, hey, don't, don't hang it up, I go, that wasn't my intention, the whole thing is that if we could look at, um, if there was a possibility of us going in-depth and looking a little further into what material would suit us best in the long term, then I wanted to have that discussion and possibly if we could do something about it. But the whole thing is that I'd rather have discussion now, at least we know where we are and then, cause we have two other schools that are gonna need to be addressed in the, in the near future. And that, you know, something, at least everybody has a, an idea, so going forward, whether it's a school or another town roof, whatever like that, that, um, I think there's gonna be a, a, a better discussion, more open dialogue and more options put on the table and I do, well, I agree with what Ed's comments were, is that I think you shouldn't just discount for one material, I think if you incorporate both materials into the, uh, competitive process, uh, that can work out for us in the long run as well, you know, so instead of favoring TPO and just getting bids on that, do both EPDM and TPO and that way, at least that way you can, uh, do the competitive process should work out more favorably to the town in regards to what we're gonna do going forward, in my opinion. Um, did you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I, I would just say that, you know, they were tasked with kind of recommending the best possible material to replace the roof and they're looking at it from a maintenance perspective, the way the seams are done differently between the two different materials, uh, the amount of maintenance and what's less puncture resistant, so, you know, I think they did their job where they're recommending what they think for this specific building, given its age and the structure of it and design, that this was the best fit.
I don't think anybody would disagree with you that they were doing their jobs, just that I think there were out, outlying questions in regards to material and, and, uh, long-term durability, you know, and everything like Jack was saying, if we go with a ninety mil, I, I believe, I, I believe the architect may have mentioned as well as Ed, it was like, all right, if we go with a ninety mil, um, that may give us even more years on it, so the whole thing is that, I just look at that, things were brought up late in the game, I, there's no reason why we couldn't discuss this. Uh, I was hoping that if there was a change that, uh, in regards to what we wanna do, that it could be done, but in the last two days of, uh, people emailing back and forth, they said it's kinda late and if it's late, it's late, but you know, something going forward, at least we have knowledge going forward and how we're gonna go about this and, and I think, uh, we do our best to inform the public of the situation and, uh, I think we all look better for it in the long run, in my opinion, so. Trish?
I'd like to thank the capital budget, I do appreciate all the time that you put into this and advisory as well and thank you Fred for meeting, um, and I guess this, this really highlights not having a TA, cause the town administrator is supposed to be the hands-on day-to-day because I know we all work forty hours a week at another job, so it's very difficult to be reaching out and we're supposed to be getting this information. But going forward, I had a great conversation with Fred about, um, planning, uh, capital project planning and where we'd like to see things go. I think there's been a lot from past leadership that now falls on our shoulders and everyone needs to understand that's why we're questioning things. It's not because we don't trust you, it's not because we think that we're not getting. It's not because we think that we're not getting the right information. It's because things have not been questioned in the past and there has not been open lines of communication. So I just want to make that clear. But in the future, I do know that a lot of people just want to be able to communicate, work together, come together and collaborate. And I look forward to this. I look forward to having these discussions and knowing that we're doing the best for our town. And at no time do we want to stop this, but we wanted to make sure all our questions were answered and that's it.
Good? Thank you, Trish.
Can I just add one last thing?
Yeah, absolutely.
By the third week of November, Jack, folks want to make sure that they have their submissions in for capital projects for next year's budget. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. All right, Ed, Fred, Matt, you guys have anything else to add? You good? Superintendent Sullivan?
No.
I'll say here.
Good, thank you.
All right, I appreciate everybody showing up and giving us.
Tell Matt he can go.
Excuse me?
Tell Matt he can go.
For showing up and giving us your time, I think it was a very well, very, very good discussion and hopefully going forward, this is kind of a roadmap, in my opinion, going forward in regards to the next roof projects that may come forward. And then hopefully it will be a better and earlier discussion on it that will benefit all of us going forward, so.
Mr. Chair, do we have to choose a date now?
No.
No, okay, all right.
I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Pat, would it help our situation with the MSBA if we picked an election date tonight so that they know it's been scheduled or?
It would be helpful. Sure, I don't know if it's a requirement, but I think it would be going into Wednesday's meeting would be helpful.
I'm not ready for that because I'm still talking to our finance team because I'm still seeing if we can do something without going into a override if there's something we can work on the budget. So when I get that all squared out with the finance team, then we'll go and then we'll set a date.
The MSBA is really big on making sure that the town is, and we are, that the town is supportive of any project that's put in front of them. It's a real, I know from a previous district I was in, it's a very important aspect of their final selection process for any type of project, just to put it out there.
And our town clerk is present as well. She could probably offer some insight.
This is not something that I can do tomorrow, and this is something that we have to mail people ballots for. So I'd just like to point out that if we're going to set a date for this, we'd like to do this sometime sooner as opposed to later.
Yeah, and and also I know I was on that meeting, Pat, and they said they they would just show a commitment by us having a date. That would, that's what they were looking.
I'm not trying, you know, I'm not trying to be.
Do you have a, do you have like a timeframe?
Well, it's going to take us at the very, very least 30 days just to get ballots.
Can you go over the microphone, please, so that we can hear you?
Sorry.
I have to get, I have to find out what you actually want on your ballot. I have to order ballots. I have to get ballots. That's a two-week process. Then I have to mail them out to all of the people. I have to give them time to get it back. Has anybody mailed anything lately? It takes at least, you know, a week just to get something here in Marshfield. And that's on a good week. So, I mean, the thing is, is that, you know, I'd like to have a couple of months to do that. We're heading into the holiday season. The first week in January, we're still in the holiday season, so I'm looking at January 10th. That's a Saturday, but I don't know if the schools can do that. Come on, come and talk to, come and share.
Todd Miller is the Superintendent of Business Finance. A couple of things we're dealing with is it's 90 days after the MSBA vote, which would put us mid to late January. So that would be acceptable. However, I think Fred, Fred and/or Matt could probably speak to the the timing of this project and the competitive nature of the bidding process and also the ability to get the materials to have a summer project done at that point. So that that's a little bit of a consideration, but obviously, you know, it's going to take time to.
Well, I have to get people to come to an election. And, you know, that's a problem.
So the the dead end date would be 90 days after Wednesday, and I think I calculated it to be January 20 something, so.
So January 20th, are you saying that January 20th would have to be the election day just as a?
We would have, we have to have, by 90 days, we have to have a funding, a funding decision.
A funding decision?
Yes.
All right, what about election, like what about a vote on this? When do we?
That's, that's, that's what I would consider.
All right, so as you were saying, is the funding decision through about the ballot question?
The ballot question.
Okay.
We'd have to know that the town has approved the ballot question.
Okay. Eric, this would, yeah.
Yeah, there's one other consideration, too. The town clerk has to get at least 35 days notice in advance of such an election by another provision of the general laws. So the window is sometime after 35 days, but before the 90th day.
So if you could give, if you could pretend that you're going to have it on the 10th and then rip it back for me in the next couple of weeks, I'm cool with that. But right now, I could start getting people lined up and figuring out if we can do it at the schools and at least get some of the planning started because a lot of our people are retired, they might be out of, you know, town. There's a lot, I mean, I don't, I know that people think that you show up and everything's there, but it's really not.
All right, so Bob, should we discuss this and then hold the vote, discussion or vote on it next Monday? Will we have a meeting?
I think you could do it Monday. That would give you enough time and give you some more thinking time.
And at least that way we can roundtable this and, you know, that.
And they would be able to tell everybody at MSBA that you're going to select that date on Monday.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Just tell them it's January 10th. Pat, just tell them it's January 10th.
Tell them what they want to hear.
Maurice, what hours would you recommend January 10th?
I don't care. You guys can figure that out. I don't really care. It's going to cost at least $12,000 to do it. I'm just, that's, I think you find that helpful.
Okay, we all good? All right. Charles, can you just make sure that that's on the agenda for next Monday?
You can be assured I won't miss that.
I can use Jeff's money for that.
I'll let you deal with that.
He's got it in his wallet. All right, I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
School committee money.
All right, I've had, I think there's a couple of people that reached out to us in regards to wanting to be on committees. And I was, I think we had a discussion before in regards to what we want to do. This is unelected boards, obviously. Are you guys open to creating alternate positions if possible on committees?
Yeah, I think as a best practice, more boards could use alternates because then when there's a vacancy, there's someone with experience who's put the time in to learn, who's ready to step in, and it makes for a much smoother transition.
Well, I mean, I don't necessarily disagree with you on that, but, I mean, at the end of the day, maybe an alternate, but it's up to the select board who they put on. Their choice in regards to their alternative. And I think that's something that, I mean, you make sure that people know is that at the end of the day, whoever's sitting in these chairs, it's their decision who they put there, just not because you're an alternate, in my opinion. So, I mean, but I mean, I'm off of adding people on, either one, somebody may be absent from the committee or somebody has interest and they want to be a participant in it. Alternate, an alternate, I think would be a good, a good start for it, in my opinion. So is that something that would interest you?
Yeah, I think that would be great. I know a couple of years ago, we created alternates for conservation, which was helpful. ZVA has done it for a long time, and I know that there's already interest on the playground committee to create some alternate positions, so.
Oh, is there a lot of people that are interested in that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Trish, what do you have to add?
I think it's a great idea.
So Bob, what do you think we should, or should we go about this? I mean, do we have to name off every?
Yeah, so what I did in the motions, I kind of gave you like a snapshot of some of the major appointed boards and the provisions that relate to their membership. That wasn't intended to be an exhaustive list.
Right.
It was just intended to be kind of a, to give you all an idea of where you might be able to create alternates. So your planning board is statutory elected.
Right.
You'd have to change the law to do that, so that's probably not one you want to touch, but ZVA.
No, you and I, you and I discussed, it's unelected board.
So ZVA already has a provision for two alternates. Conservation Commission is is a mixture of both local and state law. You can have a conservation commission anywhere from three to seven members by state law. There's no provision in the state law for alternate members, so I think you'd probably need special legislation to do that there. You know, there's nothing probably that, I mean, I'd have to ask, and I would be willing to ask the state if they would, if we, if we could avoid it and just do it locally as a local option. But then you have a whole bunch of boards where you have five members or three members or seven members. And I think we're completely within our rights to add all alternate members. We just have to do bylaw changes, and we could do that in one article in the spring. If you come up with the list of the boards you think that we have a lot of interest in and you'd kind of like to develop them, I think having two alternates on those boards would do that, would work fine.
All right, so what you're saying is that it's probably going to require a bylaw.
Yeah, we'd do a, we'd do a general bylaw amendment in the spring. And once the board tells me which board you want to amend the membership to, and anything that's local, we can definitely add associate members.
All right, so Steve, do you think we should incorporate all the boards?
Yeah, it doesn't hurt us to have the option for two alternates on, you know, every board in town because then we have flexibility, like moving forward to fill it if we wanted to.
Yeah.
You know, the ones that are most important are, you know, the boards that have public hearings where they have to decide something because sometimes those public hearings go on, and when they don't finish their job, sometimes a member misses a meeting and, you know, the alternates are really good to have, particularly on the zoning board, and it's worked well, you know, because inevitably somebody misses something, whether it's for health reasons or.
Yeah, but the zoning board, zoning board already has.
Two alternates.
Statutory.
Bylaw alternates.
Oh, so the zoning board is, I thought it was by national law.
Nope.
So it's by statute, by the bylaw of the town.
Yep.
All right. Yeah, but they already have it, so we don't have to worry about.
Yeah, you don't have to worry about them, but, you know, you do have, you have the advisory board.
Well, the advisable.
You have nine members there, so that's a pretty good board already to begin with. Maybe you don't want to alternate members there, but you could. There's no reason why you couldn't add two members there. You're required by state law to have an advisory board, but the complexion of that board is completely up to you all. So if you wanted to add an associate or an alternate member there, you could do that. You know, the waterways committee, there's a whole bunch of other ones that I listed. And I think what you would say is add up to two members, because maybe just appoint one.
It's a great one to get people involved.
No, that's why I'm looking at, I think there was one or two people that that reached out to me, and one of them had an interest in the capital project committee. And I was like, it's filled right now. I was like, and I'm, I'm sorry, I was like, I don't, I don't want to chase you away over it. I was like, that's what I was thinking. I was like, maybe we have alternate positions, at least if somebody has, is really wants that position opposed to anything else, then at least get them on there, at least they're a lot of it anyway.
There's another reason, too. You know, sometimes people move out of town, and if you already have an alternate there, they can just jump right in.
That is true.
And you don't have to do any more appointments. And I think you've, we learned that, you know, these are sometimes the farm team for the regular board and makes it easier if they kind of have an idea what's going on and what the issues are. So I'm completely supportive of doing it wherever you can.
So do you, are you, are you for like an alternate, at least one for all the committees?
Yeah, I have no problem. Again, I think it's great because then they get the history, they're involved, it gives them almost a position, even though they can't vote unless someone's not there.
All right, Bob, do you want to draft?
Yep, I'll draft it for the annual town meeting.
Yep.
To amend the bylaw, and I'll do it on all the boards that I can think about. And when we look at the draft bylaw change, if there's some board you feel strong, you don't want to have an alternate for, we'll just knock that off the list.
Yeah, I know, we'll, yeah, we'll have to go through it. So, all right, when do you think you could have that drafted?
You know, within a, within a week or so.
Tonight?
I, I like writing memos.
No, I'm just looking at that, look, if we're going to be, if we're going to be taking up, if we know there's going to be bylaws coming up, let's not knock them off now, in my opinion, you know, so we're not waiting to the last moment to to approve or disprove. It's that we know on our plate, you know, if we got something we want to put in for a bylaw, let's have a discussion and draft it up and then figure this vote on it and be done with it. That's the way I'm looking at it, so. All right, so Bob, let's put it this way, if you, if you can, there's no rush.
Yeah.
But if you could have it ready for maybe next week for us to take up, because I think there's another bylaw that we're going to take up next week.
I'm sure, I, I did a little bit of research when I prepared this motions today, so it won't take me too much longer to figure it out, and I know how to word it.
All right, if you can submit it next week for the next week's meeting, that'd be great. So let's see here. All right, discussion of votes on request to hire one additional police officer. Chief Devries emailed on 10/23, asked permission to hire one additional police officer of the local register list, making a total of three transfer officers. I'm kind of surprised the chief isn't here for this one, considering that kind of gave us a preview, the last, I think it was a month ago when he wanted to do this.
I think he might be available online. I don't, I don't know if he's available online.
I saw him online earlier, but, you know, we did previously approve two lateral transfers for vacancies, so it's not materially different. There's just been another retirement, so now it's three vacancies.
Was there another retirement?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, see, this is the information you gave me, that's why I, I'm kind of perplexed why he's here, puts the request in, but he's not, to take possible questions out of it. It's, I mean, without the chief here.
Do you want me to ask?
No, it's, you know, let's put it this way, without the chief here, and I don't know if either one of you have questions, do you want to vote on this?
I have no problem because it's very similar to what we already voted on for the other two.
All right.
Because he can do up to three, right? Lateral's?
Yeah.
Not off civil service?
You're looking at your authority to add one more, but it's the same program that he.
Correct, but he can only do up to three lateral movements without doing civil service, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, so it's just the same, it's the same.
Who's, 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 who does the actual hiring? Is it the chief or is it the select board that does this?
The, the chief will make the recommendation. I think he hires, yeah, he's a strong chief. Needs your approval.
I could have sworn, we, I think last year, I think it was before Trish came on.
You know, the chief was watching, so he's going to jump on. He just let me know. So if you give one minute, I'd be right on.
I'm online now, guys. Yep, sorry. Yes, I am.
I am, long time.
All right, so you want to give us an overview of your request here?
Yeah, it's exactly the same as it was a few weeks ago, except for we have another retirement. And we advertised for transfer officers, and we got a really good pool of candidates. And by filling these three positions, it's going to help us alleviate the problem we're having with overtime. And you guys are the appointing authority. I can only make recommendations to you, and those can be conditional offers to hire.
All right, so you write, you make the recommendations, and then at the end of the day, we do the hiring, right?
Correct. And I would have been there in person, but it wasn't an appointment, it was just an action item, and it was very similar. It's the exact same thing I just did a couple of weeks ago.
All right, so do you have a lot of requests for people to fill these positions?
We had about 20 people apply. About half of those were qualified, and we have our top three so far, but we have five good ones.
All right, so when you're putting your recommendations in, are you submitting to the select board all the applicants?
You can look at everybody that applied, but historically, the select board has always gone with the recommendation of the police department because, you know, we know what we need and what would be a good fit and who would be a good police officer.
I don't disagree with that. I think just in fairness, if you've got applicants, I would say that submit everybody's application so each, each board member can, can review it, I think would be beneficial to everybody.
Sure. I'll provide you with a list of everyone that applied and we'll rank them in order. And I'll also make my recommendation to the board for our appointments.
That sounds good. Steve, any questions or comments?
No.
Trish?
No.
You good?
Okay.
Could I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Chief, is it Charlie Souness who we met yet? If we go through that process, are we creating difficulty for some of these people that might already be employed in other communities, or?
That's a very good question. First off, congratulations on the interim job. So thank you. But yes, all those names I would like to keep confidential, because I don't know that their employees know that they're looking to leave.
I just think we might want to talk about a process to share that with the select board that protects that status, because you're going to have a vacancy another day, another time. And you, you want to keep them in good stead going forward. But anyway, we could talk about that.
I don't disagree with that. And I'm open to that discussion, absolutely.
Thanks.
Be with Charlie.
All right. Bob, so on the motion here, it's for the chief to hire, but he's actually not doing the hiring. So how should I, how should we?
Recommend for appointment. That's what I would suggest.
All right. So I move that the board vote authorized Chief Devries to recommend for appointment one additional officer of the local register list. Can I, should I put down as well as the two other officers?
That was already approved, so you don't need that actually.
What's that?
I, I just put it so you'd have the context.
So just say, on the recommended, that should cover all three positions?
Yes.
Okay. So I move that the board votes authorize Chief Devries to suggest for high, recommendation to add one additional officer of the local register list, making a total of three transfer officers in total approval for recommended hiring to the select board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Let's see here. The MSBA, we've already discussed thoroughly. Minutes of the meeting of October 15, 2025. Move that the board vote to accept, oh, actually, Steve, do you have any questions or comments on the minutes of the meeting of October 15, 2025?
No, thank you.
Trish?
No, thanks.
Okay. I move that the board vote to accept open meeting minutes of October 15, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And. Yeah, I think we're good. So it is, so I'm going to, motion to adjourn this meeting of October 27 at 7:25. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.